Good evening. We will call to order the December 11th, 2018, meeting of the City Council of the City of Fredericksburg. We will be led in invocation by Councilor Matthew J. Kelly and led in the pledge of allegiance by Cub Scout troop Weblos, Den, PAC 57. Councilor Kelly, I will call on you, and after Councilor Kelly makes the invocation, will the Cub Scouts please come forward?
Most merciful Father, bring peace to those in distress and comfort to those in pain. Please be with our men in uniform, both home and abroad, and bring them home safely to their families. Help us to make decisions that benefit the entire Fredericksburg community and always remind us that we are here to serve and not be served. In your name we pray. Amen.
Lord allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Play ball. Thank you so very much, PAC 57. We have a presentation tonight of our annual financial report, familiarly known as the CAFER or the CAFER. I will call upon Ms. Sugar, our Director of Finance.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight we have a presentation from Mr. Andrew Grossnickel of Robinson Farmer Cox. He will be presenting the fiscal year 18 Conference of Annual Financial Report. I would like to thank Mr. Dave Mackin though for the tremendous amount of work that he has put into this document, along with the entire finance staff and the entire city. This document truly is a team effort by all. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Grossnickel.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a few minutes. I'll try to be brief but go over a couple of the highlights of the financial statements for 2018. You should have in the front of your CAFER document a couple of loose documents, and one of those is a little small agenda, and that just kind of is going to go through a couple of the bullet points that we are going to touch on this evening related to the financial statements. As always, in the CAFER, there are auditors' reports that are the byproduct of the procedures that we perform during the course of our audit engagement. And for governmental organizations such as a city, there's three types of auditor's reports. The first of those is the independent auditor's report, and that's on the financial statements or the numbers themselves in the financial statements. And this is a, the current language is unmodified or a clean report on the financial statements. So that's a good report on the numbers enclosed in the financial statements themselves. We do highlight in that opinion this year that there was a significant accounting pronouncement that went into effect, a change in accounting policy related to GASB 75 governmental accounting standards board pronouncement. The government accounting standards board sets the standards for accounting for governmental organizations, and GASB 75 went into effect this year, and we'll touch on that briefly. It was a significant change in accounting policy for governmental organizations. The other two reports that are contained that are auditor-type reports in the financial statements are the compliance-type reports, the first of which is what a lot of people refer to as the Yellow Book or the Government Audit Standards Report. And it's basically on internal controls and compliance-related matters for the organization. If we had any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in controls that came to our attention during the course of our audit, those would be enclosed in that report and disclosed in that report or any compliance-related matters. We did not have any material weaknesses, internal controls, or significant deficiencies or anything of that nature, so that report was also a good report on compliance. The last report that's contained in the financial statements, it's an auditor-type report, is on the single audit or the uniform guidance requirements. So organizations that expend over $750,000 of federal money are required to have what's called a single audit, and you test for compliance-related matters related to those major programs. Again, that was a good report. We did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in controls over major federal programs during 2018, so that was a good report. We did have two communication items that are enclosed also loosely there in the front of your CAFER, the first of which being the management letter. We have a few management letter comments and recommendations for improvement that are enclosed within there in your packet. And there's also, you should have received a management response to those recommendations for improvement, that management of the city has already prepared to put their corrective action plan in place for how they're going to address those recommendations that we've made. Their second document there is a governance letter, and it is basically just required communications at the end of engagement that we have to make. If there were any disagreements with management, we would disclose those, things of that nature. But it's really just routine disclosures. We do again highlight the new accounting policy, GASB 75, that was implemented because it is, you know, a significant audit matter that affected the organization for the year ended June 30th, 2018. Now I just want to highlight a couple of financial highlights for the year and also just mention that GASB pronouncement in a little bit more detail. Basically, the GASB 75 was one of the three or four biggest kind of changes in governmental accounting policy in the last 20 years. It did the same thing that pension standard changes did a few years ago. We've touched on that a little bit, and I've kind of discussed that this OPEB was coming, OPEB change was coming up. Other post-employment benefits is what OPEB stands for, and basically for retiree health insurance premiums and other associated plans that the government participates in through the VRS system, there is a liability, a long-term liability, that goes on to the financial statements related to those benefits. And under the old standards, basically if you think of it as a mortgage payment, all the only thing that would go on your books as a liability would be if you paid less than what your monthly payment was, the accumulation of that difference. Under the new standards, it's like putting your entire, you know, mortgage balance on there. And so that was, under the old standard, that was how it was measured and how it needed to be reported, and under the new standards, that's the main change. There's some other changes into how the figures calculate and things of that nature. In the financial statements themselves, again, I just want to highlight just a couple of figures. The statement in net position is Exhibit 1, and that's located on page 25 of the bound CAFER document, and Exhibit 2 is on pages 26 and 27. Those statements are on a full accrual basis, so they include all of the long-term assets and liabilities, things like the pension liability and the OPEB liability, as well as your long-term bonds and things of that nature. So on the full accrual basis on those statements, the city reported net position of $86.7 million at the end of 2018 for the governmental activities and $69.3 million for business-type activities. And on Exhibit 2, on pages 26 and 27, you'll see that that was a $4,986,000 increase respectively in the net position. From a fund balance standpoint, so really the basis that the city budgets on, the modified accrual basis that doesn't include the long-term capital assets and the long-term obligations, on Exhibit 3, on page 31, you'll see that the general fund for 2018 ended the year with a $25.8 million fund balance, of which $16.9 million was unassigned, and the other amounts within that fund balance figure were either non-spendable, restricted, or committed for various purposes. And then when you include the other governmental funds, the capital projects funds and the special revenue funds of the city, the total fund balances were $37 million at the end of 2018. And again, if we flip over a couple pages, page 33, Exhibit number 5 shows the increase and decrease in those figures for the general fund. The general fund fund balance increased by about $1.5 million, and overall, the fund balance decreased by, for all the governmental funds in totality, by about $1.3 million at the end of 2018. And lastly, the last thing that I want to point out, just because I think it's a good tool to take a retrospective look on the financial year and also guide you moving forward in looking at budgets and actuals and things of that nature, is that Exhibit number 13, starting on page 143, is the general fund budget and actual comparison schedule. And what that schedule does, it goes down by revenue type, and then following that, it goes through the expenditures by department, and it breaks down your general fund with a original budget, a final budget, and an actual figure, and then shows the variance with those as a positive or negative figure between actual figures and the final budget. And so for the end of 2018, you can see that revenues were over budget and expenditures were under budget. So the city ended up adding some to fund balance as opposed to using some fund balance. And you can, as I said, kind of do some analysis on which departments, you know, were more or less under budget, and from a revenue standpoint, kind of track the trends of those revenue budgets and actual budgets, actual amounts for the city. Again, those are just kind of a few highlights that I wanted to touch on. I'd be glad to take any questions that the council may have at this time.
Are there any questions? This is available, is it not, for the public to read?
It will be on the website. I'm not sure if it has been put there yet.
It's on the website. We'll get that put on there tomorrow.
All right. This will be available on the website, and for those of you who want to join us in our midnight reading, our evening reading, it is a document that is public and readily understandable. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
All right. Appreciate it. We have three public hearings, but two will be combined, actually. Madam Clerk, would you please read item 5A?
Changing the ward 301 polling place from Lafayette Upper Elementary School to Walker Grant Middle School.
I would like to call on Mr. Rodriguez, the Chair of our Electoral Board.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. If we could have the slides up, please? I'd also like to introduce our General Registrar and Director of Elections, Mark Hoffman, and my Vice Chair is also here tonight to represent us. I guess I'll just talk to the requirement. I think it was about a year ago that I sat before you and told you that we were making a temporary change, but due to some regulations, that being of redistricting, that temporary change is a lot sooner rather than later. And so the Electoral Board, looking at the current situation with Lafayette Upper Elementary School where the elections are currently being held, we met and made a determination that it would be in the best interest for the voters of Fredericksburg to make that change back to Walker Grant. And so we met with the school, we met with the principals, and discussed a lot of issues, and we took a unanimous vote to recommend to the City Council to approve this, and we think this is in the best interest. This right here is just to show, for those that aren't as familiar with our voting districts, all of the wards in the City of Fredericksburg, and we are actually talking about the green one here. I'm going to show the next slide, if it'd work. Okay, thank you. And this is a lot closer to show you where the two polling locations are. Again, if you are new to Fredericksburg, Lafayette Upper Elementary, this laser pointer doesn't work, but is on the left in the red dot, and on the right is the yellow dot, and they are literally about 500 feet. They are adjoining properties. And this used to be our previous polling location. If you go to the next slide, again, give you a better bird's eye view. As a matter of fact, our volunteers are actually using the other parking lot due to the parking issues that we had at Lafayette Upper Elementary. So some of the benefits to that is that we have greater parking. The campaigning area will be a lot better defined and a lot safer. We had to move some folks for, at Lafayette, to, just to make sure they didn't get ran over by buses. And a lot more security, there's a lot, better lighting, and voters that are in that district and have been there for a while, they know this location as well, and so we're comfortable with that. We will also have access to the cafeteria during the general election presidential, so that's also a great benefit. And so for that reason, ma'am, Madam Chair, we are asking for approval for this location to move. And I do believe it has to be read twice?
That's correct.
That's right. This is an ordinance, and it will require two readings, and this is the public hearing and the first read tonight. Are there any questions for Mr. Rodriguez or any members of the Electoral Board? Yes, Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So moving the two locations, you know, back, is there any impact on folks, if they had a voter registration card and they got a voter registration card with the old location, if that would still be considered acceptable at the new location?
That's a very good question for you. So the voter ID law in the Commonwealth of Virginia is simply to establish the person, so they will actually have to attest to your address, so that won't make a difference, what's written on the voter ID card. But as part of the process, the voters will get a notice in the mail that the polling location has changed. They will also, we're going to run in the Freelance Star, we'll do advertisements, we'll work with the city staff to do a social media campaign on the City of Fredericksburg's Facebook page as well. So we will, we will do everything to get that communicated to the voters, as well as we will have special signs at Lafayette Upper Elementary to direct them on the day of the election to that location. And this was a pretty busy precinct. In November, we had 1,962 voters that came out to vote, and there are approximately over 4,000 actual registered voters in this precinct, too.
Thanks.
All right. Any further questions? Counselor Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a few comments and a question. I noted in the report that the schools worked well with you, and I appreciate that, that that relationship was good. Do you have any ideas about the non-November elections, that we may need their continued cooperation with parking, so that, you know, there's parking kind of near the voting entrance and that kind of thing? Have you worked those kinds of things out, or?
Yes, so we were actually able, again, that's not to say that Lafayette wasn't cooperative as well.
Right.
They were great to work with, but we just had a lot of limitations there. With Walker Grant, we have made arrangements for designated parking closer to the building. We also have a separate entrance that will be used for the voters, so they won't go through the main one towards the library. And even when school is in session, we have made arrangements for that hallway to be limited access so that voters aren't really interacting with children unless they're coming to vote, which they're a little too young for that.
Right.
They can observe.
Any further questions? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public here present who would like to speak to this matter? If so, come forward to the podium and state your name and address. All right. Since no one is coming forward, we will declare the public hearing closed. I'm going to interrupt this process briefly to explain to our young visitors, our Cub Scouts, what we're doing here. On matters of importance, and this is set by our law and our rules and regulations, we have public hearings where anyone can come and speak and say whether they think it's a good idea or not. And this is something of high importance, where you vote. We have other matters that will come before us tonight that require an ordinance, and when we make a new law, we have to give the public a chance to speak out. So that is why we are having a public hearing on this matter. And when we say first read, some very important matters we have to vote on twice. The first read is the first vote, and the second read is obviously the second vote. Often, the second vote won't occur until the next meeting, which gives everybody a chance to think about it, and people who didn't come to speak about it in the meeting can contact us by email or by phone, or in the grocery store. But I just wanted to explain to our Cub Scouts and our young citizens who may be sitting up here one day doing what I'm doing, that that's what this process is tonight, and that's why we're having these items that we, this item and the next two that we're going to talk about as part of a public hearing. So now I will go back to the process, and I will ask the council what they want to do about this. Counselor Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion for passage of the ordinance first read, changing the ward 301 polling place from Lafayette Upper Elementary to Walker Grant Middle School.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. I'm presuming this is coming back to us at our January meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please read items 5B and 5C as we are combining those two public hearings?
Granting a special exception to Metacorp Properties Incorporated for installation of one off-premise sign within the public right-of-way adjacent to GPEN 7779-578741. And 5C, amending the 2012 lease with Metacorp Properties Incorporated to allow installation of an additional sign in the public right-of-way adjacent to GPEN 7779-578741.
All right. I'll call upon Ms. Sherman.
Thank you.
Development Administrator.
Thank you. Tonight, the City Council is holding a public hearing regarding a special exception and the associated lease amendment to permit a proposed sign for Mary Washington Hospital. Following the close of the public hearing, the City Council should consider public input and take action on the lease amendment ordinance on first read. In conjunction with the second read of the lease amendment ordinance expected in January, City Council should take action on the special exception resolution. So we should wait on the special exception resolution until second read of the lease amendment ordinance.
Okay.
I will provide an overview of the application and answer any questions you may have. Rob Ekstrom from the City Attorney's Office is here to answer any questions regarding the lease agreement, and I believe that Dr. McDermott is here on behalf of Metacorp to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant. The city and Mary Washington Hospital and Metacorp have been working together regarding signs since 2011, 2012, with the initial approval of a special exception and lease agreement for one sign on Route 1 and one on Callan Boulevard. In 2017, City Council considered special exception requests for four new signs. Two of the signs and the related lease agreement amendment were approved at that time. The remaining two signs that were planned for the median and Route 1 were not approved. Based on council's feedback, the applicant revised the application to consolidate the two signs into one, relocate it from the median to the west side of Route 1, reduce the height from 17.7 feet to 15.75 feet in height, and reduce the size from 61.5 square feet to 58.62 square feet. The current application shows that the sign would be located on the west side of Route 1, roughly in this location, and it's just south of Mary Washington Boulevard. It's very close to the former location of that original sign on Route 1 that was 29 feet tall and 229 square feet in size. That's the lower right-hand corner picture. It was located in the median of Mary Washington Boulevard and included an electronic variable message component. This former sign was removed to accommodate road widening in 2016. The two pictures on the left are temporary signs that were installed along Route 1 to maintain visibility but will be removed upon approval and installation of a permanent The new sign, as proposed, would be three-sided and would again be located in the Route 1 public right-of-way adjacent to Snowden Office Park on property zone CT, commercial transitional. The sign again is 15.75 feet in height and 58.62 square feet in size. It has internal and external illumination. The sign requires exceptions from regulations in the Unified Development Ordinance to exceed the permitted height and to be permitted, so that the sign can be permitted off-site not meeting the setback requirements. Specifically, the code allows for an office park sign to be 10 feet in height while the proposed sign is 15.75 feet in height. The code requires the sign to be located onsite and approximately 7.9 feet from the nearest property line. The proposed sign is in the public right-of-way, not immediately adjacent to the site it is advertising. All other aspects of the sign, oops, I skipped one. All other aspects of the sign, including its size, illumination, and design, are compliant with the code. UDO contains review criteria for, that the City Council shall use while evaluating an application for a special exception. The application and the staff report details compliance with the noted criteria, but to summarize, for criteria number one, the comprehensive plan highlights Mary Washington Hospital as an important institutional city partner. Policy one for institutional jurisdictional partnerships states that the city should maintain strong liaisons with Mary Washington Hospital to share information, to support each other's initiatives, and to coordinate efforts. The first opportunity in land use planning area four is to support the continued development of Mary Washington Hospital, its medical campus, and surrounding supportive services. Approval of the special exception application would demonstrate support of Mary Washington Hospital and its initiatives to improve visibility along the Jefferson Davis Corridor. For criterias two and four, the proposed sign does not conform to all of the requirements of the UDO in regards to signage in the CT zoning district, which is the reason for the special exception. Specifically, the proposed sign exceeds the maximum height in the CT zoning district and again is located off-site, off-premise. Jefferson Davis Highway, however, is a primary entrance to the city's only hospital and trauma center campus. It provides emergency and daily medical care to city residents. Commercial uses exist along the corridor. Nearby existing signage is similar in height and size and design to the proposed sign, with the exception of the Snowden Office Park sign to the south, which is approximately five feet shorter than the proposed sign, but almost equal in size, in sign area. For criteria number three, all of the advertising requirements have been met. There's been additional mailings and emails to certain interested parties from the Snowden Office Park to make sure that they knew about the application. For criteria five, Mary Washington Hospital is a unique institutional partner of the City of Fredericksburg, providing critical medical and emergency services. Providing adequate visibility for the hospital at a major entrance is an extraordinary situation unlikely to be encountered elsewhere in the city. For criteria six, there are potential impacts to the sign, and conditions to ensure that it would be installed as shown on the submitted exhibit, to screen mechanical elements, and to require a minimum five-and-a-half-foot setback from the sidewalk are appropriate and are included as part of the conditions in your package. Staff recommends approval of the lease ordinance on first read. The only change to the agreement would be the addition of this new location to allow this new sign on public property. No other terms of the lease are altered. With the consideration of the lease ordinance on second read, staff recommends approval of the special exception resolution with the noted conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Sherman? Yes, Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned the Snowden Office Park. Did anyone from there respond to the emails or the letters about the sign?
Yes. One, one person did, and she said that she was fine with it, and that, and then there were two members of the public who spoke at the Planning Commission, who own property in the Snowden Office Park, who expressed concern with the sign and its proximity to the Office Park.
And what were their concerns?
There was some concern about general traffic and site distance, and there was some concern that it would be confusing because it's, because it's in front of the Office Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Counselor Devine?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment, and so I'll comment even though we haven't had the public hearing yet, but I just wanted to thank staff and Mary Washington Healthcare for working with the city on this, because it's been a couple of years of going around and roundabout location for this sign, and I appreciate maintaining our medians the way we designed them and also maintaining our long Route 1 view of, you know, the UMW overpass and so forth. We were trying to maintain, you know, our plantings and our view, and I think this accomplishes that. So, you know, we've gone round and roundabout placement, and I think we've come to a good place. So, thanks.
Thank you. If there are no more questions from council, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak? All right, then I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Madam Mayor?
Uh huh. Yes, Vice Mayor Withers. Yes, Vice Mayor Withers.
I'd like to endorse Council Devine's comments. I very much appreciate what the hospital has done to work with us on these signs, and I very much appreciate what the hospital does for this community. And having said that, I will make a motion that we have first read resolution granting special exception to Medical Properties Incorporated for installation of one off-premises sign within the right-of-way adjacent to -- we don't need the PIN number, but...
Second.
Madam City Attorney.
We got off track a little bit because we weren't on a public hearing.
Oh.
Well, I thought she closed it.
I thought I closed the public hearing. That's all right. No. No, the public hearing is closed.
Yep.
Right? I did not?
You did close it, but you're not supposed to vote on the special exception until second read. That's what he just read.
Oh, we're voting. We need to vote on the ordinance amending the lease. The special exemption will be voted on with the second vote. So, we are off-track, Madam City Attorney. The public hearings were combined.
Okay.
So, you will -- yes, the public hearings were combined, so we have completed that part correctly. The vote tonight must be on the lease, the ordinance amending the lease. The special exemption cannot be accepted until we amend the lease.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
All right, so are we perfectly clear on that? We need the second to approve withdrawal of that motion. No?
We just didn't vote on it.
All right, the motion's withdrawn. If there's no objection, the motion is withdrawn.
Yes.
All right, now, let's have a motion on the ordinance amending the lease.
So, Madam Mayor, I move on first read the ordinance amending the 2012 lease with Metacorp Properties Incorporated to allow installation of an additional sign in the public right-of-way.
Second. All right. Well, I would just like to thank Dr. McDermott for being here this evening, and again, thank Metacorp Health Systems for working with us on what became a thorny problem because they lost their nice big sign when we had to change the roads. But we do appreciate it very much, and I think this is a handsome sign. And as the former leasing agent and sales agent for Snowden Office Park, I think their new entrance is a great advantage to them, and I don't see it as a disadvantage at all. So, and I know that they work closely together as well. So, thank you very much. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you. So, we will have at the first meeting in January an opportunity to do a second read on this ordinance and the special exception, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearings for this evening. We now come to the portion of our reading, of our meeting where we give citizens an opportunity to speak on any topic. Please be fair to everyone and observe the five-minute time limit, and yield the floor when the clerk of council indicates that your time has expired. We have only one speaker this evening, and it's Sabrina Weitzman. Sabina, I'm sorry, and I know better.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here to say thank you tonight. Thank you to each of you for including redistricting reform on your 2019 legislative agenda that you'll vote on later tonight. I've spoken with most all of you over the last 18 months about the harm to our democracy from partisan gerrymandering, and I've appreciated your willingness to discuss this issue with me, and I've learned a lot in all our conversations. So, thank you. As you probably know, there is now a draft proposal for a constitutional amendment to tackle the issue of redistricting reform. It was developed, the approach was developed by a ten-member Citizens Committee, which was a bipartisan group of past state legislators and academics. They've been meeting since this past August, first to look at what other states have tried and then to come up with some ideas for Virginia. This is in the news. I have a wonderful graphic, actually, I forgot to attach it to my piece of paper here, but I'll share it with you electronically about the ideas for, that this amendment puts forward about how to structure, how to staff a committee, a commission, and what the rules would be. It's kind of an interesting mix between the good things of partisanship. I mean, it acknowledges that you can't magically take that out of the process, but it kind of orchestrates the process so that the negatives of extreme partisanship are mitigated, if you will. So, as you know, there isn't much time to get fair rules in place before redistricting happens in 2021. Amending the state constitution as the, as we envision, requires that it pass this session and the following session and that there be an intervening election, and then it goes to the people for a vote. So, it's a big, big haul, and if it doesn't happen, a big lift, I should say, and if it doesn't happen this year, it's not going to happen in advance of redistricting. So, I'm hopeful that the clarity and the timing of your endorsement will work in favor of the process. As someone very interested in politics but with very little experience in the hallways of the State House and with very, with little skill persuading actual politicians, I was so impressed to attend one Virginia's lobbying day this past year with Counselor Withers, or Vice Mayor Withers. The way that he managed to get us past the assistants and into offices made a really big impression on me, and I realize how hard and how very effectively all of you work on our behalf in Richmond. And I'm heartened to realize that a word from any of you, particularly those of you who have forged these big connections, might be the thing that gets this amendment out of committee and before the full legislature and hopefully before the people of Virginia. So, thank you not just for your willingness to take on redistricting reform, but for your wise leadership across the board on behalf of the people of Fredericksburg. I'm so very grateful and very proud to be represented by this council. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you very much. We come now to the council agenda. Does any councilor wish to add anything to the council agenda? Counselor Devine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item seven A would be the Inns of Historic Fredericksburg sale of property.
Item seven A. All right, item seven, Counselor Kelly?
Yeah, item seven B, my conduct last Tuesday.
Anybody else? All right, Counsel Devine, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Inns of Historic Fredericksburg, known really locally here as the Courtyard Marriott, is looking to sell the property by the close of this calendar year, because this is our last official meeting this calendar year. And the sale of the property would seek to assign its interest in the parking space lease. That I would like to have council authorize the city manager to review the proposed sale and confirm all material points, and I guess deal with the city's perspective on as lesser in the parking space and as the holder of rights under that agreement. So, again, I would like us to just let the city manager look at the city's interest in that transaction and authorize him to do so before the end of this calendar year.
All right, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions or discussions on part of the council? All right, please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of my pet peeves in government in being involved in it is when we mess up. We seldom fess up to what we do, and I'm therefore in a position where I have to live up to what I say. I want to publicly apologize to my colleagues and to staff for my conduct last Tuesday regarding the vote on the project on Fall Hill Avenue. My comments in a lot of cases were inappropriate and unnecessary, and I do not provide any excuses in regards to what I said. I do hope, as we move forward, that we do, I did make some points, and I made them in a bad way, and I'm acknowledging that, but I think we do need to give staff and have discussion better direction with regards to how we're going to marry development with our trail system, what we should expect from projects and bring it up forward, so we do not have to go through a bit of a process that we went through now. Two, I do believe that with the stadium coming in and the development pressures we even talked about a little bit this evening, especially at Celebrate Virginia, that the MOU, which kind of centered some of this discussion, needs to be looked at again with all parties at the table to make sure we're on the same page as we move forward with future development on that site. And finally, I think having the discussion we had tonight on the marketing study, I think brought some things home to a lot of us in regards to what the future holds for the city of Fredericksburg. And I do realize that I'm not in any way disparaging staff when we talk about, yes, we're providing information, but as I said Tuesday, and again, in improper manner, the development community is looking at the market as is today. We are looking at Fredericksburg five and 10 years down the road, and those two visions do not line up. And I think it does behoove us, and I was very encouraged with the conversations tonight and the questions tonight from my colleagues during our work session, where I think we all understand that we're going to have to take a much more active role with the development community in deciding where the future direction of the city is, and I look forward to those conversations, as staff has said, to hopefully begin in January. But again, I want to reiterate my conduct of last Tuesday and the comments made to you were totally inappropriate, and I do apologize both to my colleagues and to staff. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Kelly.
I'd just like to thank...
Vice Mayor Withers.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Kelly for that.
We accept your apology. Anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda as submitted.
Second. Please cast your votes. We have two sets.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two sets of minutes before us, the public hearing on November 27th and the regular session of November 27th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move approval of minutes as submitted.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
City manager's agenda. I will call upon Mr. Whitley for our first quarter financial report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, and good evening, and I hope we're all having a wonderful holiday season in advance of the next couple of weeks. If I could have the computer, please. And while we are getting the computer, this is going to be the first quarter financial report. So, for the fiscal year, for those who may not be familiar, the city's on a fiscal year of July to June. So, our first quarter financial update would be for the months of July, August, and September. And I would point out a couple of things for those who haven't, you know, for those that may not be as familiar with the city's sort of financial rhythms. Even though quarters are equal in chronological time, three months each, the first quarter is sort of a real quarter of very light activity. And then the second quarter, it picks up a lot because you'll have real estate, personal property bills coming due for the first half. The third quarter, you know, again, you'll see some activity with business license and things, but a little bit lighter. And then the fourth quarter is where you really see, kind of like you're close to the finish. It's a huge, huge quarter for us. So, very light activity, not a whole lot to report on, but I did want to make council aware of a few things. So, the first quarter overview, it's very early in the fiscal year. I did want to point out some really good news we've gotten on real estate, is that we're going to be already, because of a closing on a tax sale, our real estate delinquent and interest, which we have penalties and interest for all property taxes in the budget and a separate line item each, both of those are going to be over-budget estimates, and the total, as of today, would be about $650,000, which is really good. So, we do look at this because it is a tax sale. It's one-time activity, so we'll bring you some recommendations for your consideration on a budget amendment based on funding one-time or capital needs coming up in one of the next few meetings. But that is good news. Expenditures, generally speaking, and it does skip to the end of the report, but they're generally on track, and our contingency remains at the adopted level of $525,000. So, the next few slides are some graphs. So, this is the sales tax revenue in the first quarter, and again, these are '16, '17, '18, and '19, but it's only the first three months. So, three months, three months, three months, three months, just showing the first quarter how we're doing compared to first quarters in prior years. And forgive me in advance, but I did change the axes a little bit, because if I just put it on to a zero to three million, the line's just flat and you don't see anything. So, sales tax is up a little bit, 2.64 percent, and that's good news for us. If I could get to the next slide. Meals tax continues, not quite as aggressively as in the past, but it's up 1.24 percent over the same period in fiscal '18. To the next slide. Lodging tax, we did discuss a little bit in the work session upstairs that lodging tax has been strong for us, and we've had good vacancies. This is three months of data for fiscal '19. It does show a little bit of a slide of 6 percent from the same period in 2018. We'll have to see whether or not that trend continues over the balance of the year. Next slide, please. And then finally, this is a bit of a smaller tax revenue source for us, but it is sort of a, you know, a trend we're seeing, that the telecommunications sales tax, which sort of took over for consumer utility tax for telephone several years ago, is now a sales tax and collected by the state and remitted to us, has been declining for several years, and the first quarter trends continue that slide. And just looking back fiscal '14, year-end, we were at 1.8 million, 1.787. Fiscal '18, we're down to 1.63, and unless this trend kind of reverses and does so in a hurry, and I don't think it will, we're not going to make our budget estimate this year, and fiscal '19's budget estimate is 1.65. Don't have any good answers or policy recommendations for you, just something we're monitoring. Sometimes revenues will perform well, and every now and then, because of changes in the marketplace or different reasons, you'll have a revenue that starts performing poorly, and I think this is one of them. So, with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions council might have?
Counsel Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got two questions, if you don't mind. First, with regard to the year-over-year trends that we were seeing in the report, does that take into account, I know inflation hasn't, is not a huge impact, but if we wanted to talk about real numbers versus inflation, do we know how that, what that plays a role? So, if we, you know, for example, if we received $100,000 last year and received $105,000 this year, but there was a 5 percent inflation, then it's essentially flat, right? So, in real, in real dollars, at least versus the previous year, I mean, do you see any sort of significant changes possibly?
I would, I would say it this way. We don't actually use inflation when we give these retail, I call them retail, but they're just, what did we, what was in the till? These are just the numbers. So, I don't adjust them for inflation. Over time, you could go back over 10 years and sort of look at things and say, you know, hey, wow, one of the reasons the general fund went from, and I'm going to make up a quick number, of 75 million to 95 million today was, wow, we're seeing inflation. What does that look like? Well, it might look like a raise for employees or having to pay more for... Well, it might look like a raise for employees, or we're having to pay more for suppliers, or the, the power bill rates went up, things like that, things that actually constitute inflation. So I don't go into a quarterly report like this, or even an annual audit, you won't see an inflation adjustment, you know, to go back to CPI, but you can see the effect of it by all means. But there's individual decisions that are sort of driving, you know, what we consider to be inflation at the, at the macro level, sort of nationwide or statewide.
Okay. Yep. Thank you for, for that clarification. And then the, the second question, regarding the, the one-time, I guess, call it a windfall, maybe, 650,000. Given the telecommunications, telecommunications sales tax decrease, is there any need to maybe set some of that aside, to maybe, maybe patch that, that hole if we don't think that it's going to meet our, our budget?
That might be a recommendation we would come forward with, or it may be, the telecom sales tax, you're probably looking at an order of magnitude on a, on a miss there of maybe 50 or 75,000.
Okay.
And that may come forward in other revenues toward the end of the year. Or, you know, if we, if you miss by 50, but you have five others that make it to the good by 10, you're to the good. And normally, if, with, with good luck, and we tend to be, I call it appropriately conservative on our revenue estimates, because we don't, we don't want to shoot for the moon and have all of a sudden mid-year course corrections, which we've done before, and it's, it's very not fun. You'll have overall, maybe, that the revenues will exceed the budget estimates by a little bit. The question is, you just don't know where. If you knew exactly where, you'd, you'd go ahead and budget for it. So that may be something that we say, okay, well, let's amend the budget, and we'll take, we'll recognize 50,000 here, and we'll patch that hole. Or we may recommend to council that we'll patch it later, or see where it comes in later, maybe from another source, or I could be surprised and it turns around. I doubt it. We've gotten, we've gotten a pretty good trend now for four years that it's sort of been doing this. But it's not an order of alarm of millions of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars that were out. Part of being that appropriate conservative is, I think we've taken it down some. Just turns out that the, the trend of decline is going a little faster than we've been able to kind of keep up with, so we're chasing the number down. I don't know if that answered your question or not, but it's something we could consider.
All right, no, that, that does answer. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for Mr. Whitley? Thank you. Item 10B, Mr. Whitley is also yours, approving the legislative agenda.
Thank you very much. The item 10B is the legislative agenda. We did discuss this at the work session in November, the, the last meeting, as well as on the floor as a transmittal item, and as a result of that, we did make several changes. So this would go to the General Assembly for their session that would go, begin on January 9th, which is our short session of 30 days. The changes included support for the University of Maryland Washington Fine Arts Center complex renovations, support for local authority to regulate plastic bags and other polystyrene containers, support for form of redistricting process, support for the city schools' efforts to be allowed to open prior to Labor Day, and support for additional education funding. And you'll see those items reflected in the revised resolution. I won't, I won't read them unless you'd like me to, or have any questions about them. So this item is ready for your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Whitley? Councillor Devine?
No question, but a comment again. Just want to thank Mr. Whitley and staff and the rest of council for putting this list together. It's 13 items that could significantly impact our community, and, you know, we are going to be spending some time in Richmond on the city's behalf, pushing these items, and so I just want to say thank you, and I look forward to the public looking at them and giving us your input as well, so that we can share that, or please share it directly with your elected officials down in Richmond. So, thank you.
I will say this, they do read emails, or they are well aware of emails and comments, and it is, is important to contact your legislator. So take a look at this legislative agenda, and if there matters in what you care about, make sure you contact your members of the General Assembly, because they pay attention to the, to the comments that they receive.
And Madam, with that, I'd move to approve the legislative agenda.
Second.
All right, councillor Kelly, do you have a comment?
Just a quick comment. I think we've done a good job putting this together, and again, kudos to staff, especially for making some changes per our discussions. I would just ask, and we've had this conversation before, that most organizations now from VACO, VML, PRTC, VRE, and everybody else like that, have now gone pretty much to legislative committees to work with. GWRC now is actually trying to, meeting with our local delegations before they leave on one-on-one instead of going all the way down, and being a little bit more focused on specific legislation, or frankly, drafting legislation, and being a little bit more focused. And I hope going into the following cycle down the road, that we might take a little bit more time earlier on, and kind of be a little bit more focused in our, in our efforts on specific legislation and getting our, I mean, Bob Thomas, frankly, is the first, since I've been here, first time I've ever had a member of the General Assembly stand for this council and talk. And there should be no reason why Mark Cole shouldn't be down here, that Bryce Reeves shouldn't be down here, Richard Stewart shouldn't be here, where to come to us to talk about the legislative agenda, instead of us always having to go down and talk to them. So get through this one, and hopefully next time we can put a little bit more effort in it. Thank you.
And, and as we know, Delegate Thomas is actually drafting legislation and working with local folks on some of these matters, so it, you know, we don't just send a piece of paper down there and wait for it to land. Vice Mayor Withers?
Yeah, that's a good suggestion from councillor Kelly, but just, just for information, some of us have worked with Senator Stewart and Mr. Thomas, Delegate Thomas, over the last few weeks on, on certain part of the legislation here, they met us here in, in town, so it's not all our end area, but at least we, we've worked with, with them on some of that. So, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
Item 10C, Mr. Craig, I've seen your planner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council approved two special use permits at your meeting on November 27th, 2018. One was for a 7-Eleven, and the other was for a Valvoline. They were both on the same 2.72-acre property in Celebrate Virginia South. This is the development plan for the 7-Eleven. It's shown on what was deemed Parcel B, adjacent to the Wegmans. So this is Parcel B, you can see it up here at the top right of the screen, and this is the Wegmans. Here is the proposed Valvoline, the approved general development plan for the Valvoline. Parcel A is shown here, and this use was called for on Parcel A. As part of their application, the applicant proposed direct access to Fall Hill Avenue from the two uses through the 7-Eleven site, and you can see that here, that was their submission. That access point was not approved. In reaction to the approved conditions, because both the uses were approved, just not the access, limiting access, the applicant produced a revised site configuration showing the change in access and switching the location of the 7-Eleven and Valvoline uses, and that's what's on the screen here today. The two items before you all this evening are resolutions, amending the approval of the Valvoline and 7-Eleven resolutions. It would have this language for both items, to permit them to be configured on the property, either on Parcel A or Parcel B, either use, so that they can accommodate the required limited access point. It is two resolutions, which would require two votes, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Craig? Vice Mayor Withers?
I have a question, just for clarification. The conditions, other than the, than the entrance, will still remain with, with this approval, is that correct, as far as landscaping is concerned?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so, so the elements of the GDP, other than their general location.
Okay, good, good. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Excuse me?
Councillor Kelly?
Yeah, just want to make sure they're clear. It's, as I understand it, it's understood that the berm will be reduced in size, and then just plantings put on top of it. Is that correct? And everybody's copacetic with that? Okay.
Madam Mayor, yeah, you know, I think three to four feet is appropriate. The size of the berm typically is not that, that great, it's just, it's a break, and it allows for the landscaping, so, so I think, looking at other sections there, and, and other sections of this region, three to four feet, I think is a reasonable request, so. I'm, I'm great with it, if everybody else is.
Okay. Again, do we have a motion?
Ma'am.
Yes, councillor Duffy?
I'll propose the motion. Let's see, where am I? To amend 7-Eleven Valvoline special use permits, the Resolution 18 granting special use permit for an automotive service use for a site located on Fall Hill Avenue near Hospitality Lane.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
And councillor Duffy, you want to proceed?
Yes, the next resolution, I'll move granting a special use permit for a convenience store with gasoline sales for a site located on Fall Hill Avenue, again, near Hospitality Lane.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
And I neglected to thank Officer Moore for being with us this evening. Call on the city manager for the city manager's update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to highlight a couple of issues. First of all, I want to tell everybody that we will not be having, maybe to your disappointment, a meeting on December 25th, two weeks from today. Do wish everybody a Merry Christmas. That's an early gift, I suppose. Do wish folks again Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. We also want to encourage folks to shop in 22401, zip code 22401. Obviously, the, we do encourage residents and the greater region to shop downtown and throughout the city. And to make that easier, we do have four-hour parking throughout downtown, throughout the holiday season, all the way through January 31st. So know that you can find parking downtown and shop for four hours and, and beyond if you park in our garage. So plenty of opportunity downtown. Also want to highlight the fact that we've got this year's family fun night New Year's Eve celebration, that'll be at the Fredericksburg Fairgrounds on New Year's Eve, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. That'll be an indoor and outdoor activity, so folks can find great fun out of the weather at the fairgrounds again on December 31st. More information is on our website. I'll also highlight the fact that we've got the community conversation that continues with the International Sites of Conscience. We do have them in town again tomorrow night, December 12th and December 13th, 6:30 PM, both nights, at the library. Please participate in the last of a series of conversations related to the slave auction block and how we're telling a more broad story in our community. And I will finalize by saying, I do appreciate the great effort of staff and many volunteer organizations to, to host this year's Christmas parade. It was, once again, a big hit. It was threatening the weather a bit, but did stay in, in check, and we had 70 organizations come out with thousands of spectators. I think it was phenomenal again this year. I do appreciate Huber Motor Cars for their sponsorship, and Potomac Nationals for their participation as well. A great event was had by all. With that, Madam Mayor, your calendar is before you, and I'm happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Any questions for Mr. Barudy? I received many compliments on the parade, and especially on our wonderful staff that cleans up so quickly afterwards.
Madam Mayor-
Vice Mayor Withers?
I, I had several comments from people who came from out of town on Sunday to different churches to say they couldn't get over how well the city had cleaned up after that late-night parade. They, it's just, several people told me that. So congratulations to staff. Thank you for bringing that up. I almost forgot it.
All righty, we are going to go into closed session. Do, do we have a resolution?
Madam Mayor, I move to go into closed meeting under Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A39 for discussion of confidential memoranda and information related to economic development related to the Liberty Place Project, where disclosure of the information would adversely affect the financial interest of the city of Fredericksburg.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. I guess we, please cast your votes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Are we, are we going upstairs?
Yes.
All right, we're going upstairs to the suite, but we are in closed session. This meeting is adjourned.